Way to go there.
Okay, so the time of six o'clock has arrived.
So you wanted to share what I saw?
And our meeting of the October 30th, 2019, special meeting of the Racine Unified School Board has been duly noted, so I will call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Ms. Tobias, would you take the role?
Mrs. Barbian.
Here.
Mrs. Simbala.
Here.
Dr. Frontier.
Here.
Mr. Hanser.
Here.
Mr. Heckan-Lively.
Here.
Mrs. Hoover.
Here.
Mrs. McKenna.
Here.
Mr. O'Connell.
Here.
Mr. Weiser.
Here.
All are present.
All right. First item on our agenda is a presentation on the 2019-2020 original budget.
So, thank you. I just wanted to mention a few things before we go into the presentation. I do have, we do have the budget document. It's, it was in your packet. We also have printed copies, and it'll be posted on the website. And so there's quite a bit of work done into this. We are working to have this document move towards meeting best practices in school budgeting. So it does have some new areas in the budget. It includes challenges and strategies that we had for the budget, so there's a section on that. We also included sections on our debt service area where we have total outstanding debt and a trend on that. That's something GFOA, for best practices, includes, so that's included. And also, there's, for the first time, this is kind of a first start, but in the addendum, it does have details about each school's total staff, their staff cost, non-staff cost, total budget, federal, percent of federal budget. So these are some things where it kind of gives you a picture of where the budget goes. So, for example, Case is actually an $11.2 million budget, so it's a fairly significant operation. And we also have sections for each, some of the departments' budgets, so like my budget includes food service. So my budget is $1.8 million, one of the smaller ones. Shannon's is pretty large for all of the support that she provides to the schools. So this is a section that gives you a little more picture. We're going to keep working on that area to provide some more transparency information to the public about the different sections of the budget, and we'll keep getting better on that one. And then, so, and I'll go with the presentation, but I also, there's a lot of work that went into putting this budget together. It was a very long process that almost is a full year of work. There's a team that puts it together, all the administrators, the leadership, Dr. Gallion. But we also have finance staff, Jack Parker's here, he's the budget manager. He did a lot of work on this. He gets the, so he's, he is my job when I first started. So it's a, we have a team of people that all put this together, from all the chiefs, all the departments, all of their administrative staff, the school principals, the staff that contributed at the schools to their budget, the grant budgets. So there's a lot of work that goes on, so it's a team effort that put this all together. So I'd like, you know, we should, we appreciate all that work that was put in on this challenging budget.
That's my introductory part.
So I want to echo that. I want to personally thank Mark and his team, the entire finance department and budget department, for the work that they not only did to balance this budget, but the work that they continue to do to bring us into GFOA standards and making it a very transparent, as you just mentioned, document that the public can read and understand where resources are allocated. I'm pleased to announce that we have a balanced budget this evening, even though we went through a lot of challenges to get there and made some tough decisions, but we actually worked as a team to get there. In addition to having a balanced budget, this budget also provides a 5% decrease, decrease in the tax rate from $10 to $9.49. So I'm really proud of that. Some other things that should be noteworthy for the community and the board to know is that in this budget, we were able to add some additional academies of Racine pathways. We were also able to do a technology refresh for our students with 14,000 new Chromebooks and Windows computers being added to the schools. We were able to continue to expand our early learning, successful programs with all, full day 4K, as well as our monitor program. We were able to continue to work toward having our buildings be safe by upgrading safety enhancements and technology, some secure vestibules, so on and so forth. And then, one of the really big exciting things about this budget is we're able to provide two large community projects that the community as a whole will be able to benefit from. All of the children and students and families in this community will be able to benefit from the facilities at Pritchard Park, which was announced this afternoon, and then was groundbreaking this afternoon, and then the RUSD Aquatic Center. So that is going to be another venue that will open itself to the community. And so, I'm proud that, of all the work that went into this budget, and I'm proud of the things we were able to continue to move forward on. So it's been a long journey, like Mark said, but we were able to get there by working together.
I thought I have a slide here just that kind of is a little bit of an indication of the journey. So we started the budget with, in January, presenting some of what we, my initial projections. I thought that we'd lose about 190 students. Our revenue would be down $6 million. We weren't sure about our levels of compensation for staff. We thought health benefits would go up, student technology costs, voucher costs and all that. But then, as we worked through, we passed an interim budget, and now we have a final. And so some of the change, more significant changes is in the revenue category, where initially I thought we'd be down $6 million, and we ended up only being down $1 million. A lot of that is because of the state budget action. They changed some of the revenue for the district. They provided per pupil funding increases and special education aid increases. But we also implemented a strategy to provide us with more federal revenue to help us balance the budget. So federal funds were, we saved some of the money from last year's budget to use, to have federal funds available in this year's budget to help us with the budget as well. So, and in addition, in the health area, we were, instead of having an increase in health and benefits costs for employees, we ended up having a savings of $280,000. So these are some significant swings that helped us balance the budget. It's just kind of, and this kind of mirrors what I talk about in the staff, the budget tracking reports that I provide to the board each month. The other thing would be the district staffing. It's slightly different from the final to the interim budget. We, it's, the total staff reductions is 67. We did have some additional staff that we did increase as the third, as school year started, which impacted the budget. But while it's 67 reduced staff, we did, district funded staff was down 78. So some of those, that shows the federal funds, we have more staff, they were funded by federal funds.
Dr. Frontier, are you, Mark, hold me. Mark, are you willing to take questions during the presentation?
It's right at the top there. I know enrollment is something you give us through the year, and it's always a guess. What have we learned this year? Why that discrepancy, which was pretty large?
Well, sometimes, I think we did have fewer enrollments in our early learning programs, and I thought sometimes we were always optimistic about enrollment in our early learning programs, so that was a little bit less than we expected. And I think our enrollment in, most of the enrollment impacts, I think it's referenced in the document where we had the changes. On page 22, we had our elementary grades, there was about a 5% reduction in grades K to 5. So those are some of the, that's the category where we had enrollment change.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanser.
Can we go back to the previous slide? So, Mark, you talked about an increase in federally funded staff. What is that FTE number based on? What is the dollar amount that's attached to those folks?
So that's, that carryover amount is about $2 million. So we came up with a strategy to keep instructional support staff using title funds, federal title funds. So that, so that allowed us to have those coaches and instructional support staff still available at our schools using those title funds.
But what is the cost, how is FTE defined? I mean, it's full-time equivalent, but is it a full-time equivalent teacher, support professional? And what is the dollar amount that's assigned to that, then? Is it the average, the average salary of our teachers that we multiply times that number in terms of dollar amount? Or how does?
It's actual cost.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Each teacher varies.
Right, and I just, I understand, and want to make sure that it is a moving math problem. It's not a static $50,000 for each FTE value. Okay. Thank you.
The next slide just kind of shows the total revenues for all of $330 million budget that we have, where it comes from, state sources is about 60%. This is about the same pie split as last year, other than federal funds went up by 1%. This is indicative of this carryover funding and the strategy that we had. So that's about the only change that we had in total funds compared to prior year. The tax rate, this is the historical tax rate comparison that shows the reduction of 5%, of our tax rate. And at the budget hearing, I did project a 5% tax cut, so a tax reduction, so I hit that target based on the September hearing. And about the statewide average last year for school districts was about 940, 46, 47. So we're kind of around the range of last year's statewide average for school districts. So it's just kind of gives you kind of a benchmark about where we're at.
Mark?
Mr. Hanser.
The difference in that would be that, with the exception of Racine and Milwaukee, that $9 and some odd cents doesn't fund a voucher program, and so more of their dollars potentially stay local. Would that be an accurate statement?
And that's the thing, that every school district now is kind of different. Some have a higher voucher levy, like our district has, and Milwaukee has a higher voucher levy. Some other districts don't have much of one at all. So we're kind of all over, there are differences between what school districts levy and how the tax rate is impacted. And some of it's the local economy and how aid is, whether they pass referendums, or there's a number of different factors.
Thank you.
Expenditures by function, this is all funds, like I mentioned, so that's all of 330-something million, includes food service and community service funds. So the areas that went up are, compared to last year, would be vouchers and open enrollment costs went up, food service and community service. So that's a category where a combined food service and community service, that did go up. So that's indicative of the funding for community programs in the aquatic center. Debt did go up slightly as our debt service payments went up for some of our other energy efficiency projects. But some of the, all the other categories went down. Central, insurance, business operations, and administration, these all went slightly down.
Mr. Heckan-Lively?
Got it, Mr. Frontier.
So how much are we going to be paying in this budget on vouchers as compared to last year?
So last year, we paid about $18.9 million for private school vouchers, or 18.6, and this year, it's about $22 million.
Mr. Hanser.
So it goes up by about, it goes up by the enrollment increase, but also the state used to pay for 100% of the voucher program, and then they decided they changed their mind. They're going to make it a local cost share, so then it was added to our levy and was funded through that. So they're phasing out 100% funded students and then phasing it in so that we provide a cost share for that.
Mr. Hanser.
So Fed cut the interest rate today by, what, 25 basis points or something along those lines? And this last year and the year before, we'd done some debt refinancing, and that saved us some significant dollars. Is that something that we could see potentially save us some significant dollars in this upcoming budget, or is this already set and we are looking at that more for 2020 and 2021?
So we do, this is like the budget that sets the tax levy, and it starts, it's more of the one we report to, we do adjustments throughout the year. We'll work with our bond councils, and if they find something that they think they could propose for refinancing, they'll, we'll work with them on getting, getting that savings achieved. So we could have something come up, and I'll be sure to ask Baird if something can come up, and we may have something to bring back to you.
Thank you.
This is another, just a slide to indicate that, this is just the, our operating funds of the General and Special Education Fund. This just indicates, school districts are a people-intensive business. We have lots of staff in the schools, teaching our kids, so 73% of our budget goes for staff. One of the areas that did increase is purchased services. That is an indicator of our open enrollment cost is considered a purchased service, but also our computer rental lease for our students, that we did have an increase in that expense in that area. So that's just a, so otherwise, it's about the same as last year. And voucher payments did go up from last year, from 6.7% of that to 7.9. So that was, that's pretty much my summary. I would be happy to answer any other questions about the budget document.
Ms. McKenna.
I appreciate your summary. Is that, I don't know if the meeting's being taped, or is that available for the public to look at? But you just presented.
Yeah, I can give that to Elizabeth to have that available.
I was trying to flip through the pages to see where they're all at, but it's a nice summary.
Took things from the budget document that was sent out. The only thing that is new, was new, was kind of this summary here, that page that kind of shows the trend of the budget development, so.
We'll upload that into Board Docs. We'll upload that into Board Docs.
Okay, is this being taped as well?
Yes, this is being taped.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Mr. Hanser.
So, Mark, I'm looking at page 15. It shows our general fund balance for the last 10 or 11 budgets, pretty steady at around 17%. One of the things you shared with us in the past is that, with some of the increased public debt that the villages in the county have taken on due to some of the development going on in the region, that it impacts, could impact our credit rating, or our, our ability to get carry credit. This fund balance being stable, what impact does that have on that? Does that mitigate any of that because of the other public governmental agencies?
So Moody's does bond rating for us. They just did one a few months ago, and our stability and our fund balance is an indicator of our strength of our financial operations. So by having this stable, it does help us with our bond rating. So that, that is one of the things they mentioned, is that we have had, we do fit within the range of having a preferred fund balance, but if we saw it dropping, we would probably have a change, a negative change in the bond rating. Now, they did provide a negative outlook, and it was all based on all the municipal governments in the region are bonding, borrowing money to put in infrastructure for the region. So because of that, it's impacting us, and I argue that's not fair. And in fact, there's a page on our debt service showing our, page 34, showing our declining debt obligations, and, but it is, as you indicated it, we are impacted on our bond rating. It was, we have the same bond ratings, so our borrowing shouldn't really be affected, but they did put a notation of a negative outlook based on the regional activity.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Barbian.
The state did help us out a little bit with special education costs. Long overdue. We haven't had an increase in 10 years. Special education is state and federally mandated on what we do for our students, and certainly we want to take good care of our precious children who are in special education. How much, even though we had that slight increase, is there anything that was still had to be paid out of Fund 10 by the local taxpayer?
So the general fund contribution to, to the Special Education Fund is budgeted at about $34 million. Let's see, so on page, so we still continue to have, here on page 30, there's fund transfers from other revenues, $33,997. So that actually is down 1.4%, which is partly due to the increase in the state aid. You can see state sources increased by 600,000. We do anticipate next year we'll get a.
It'd be more. But the, still, the local taxpayer needs to offset the amount of not covered by state and federal.
Exactly.
Dr. Frontier, did I see you?
Yes, with regard to the general fund balance, 17.2, does that money, that money's invested? I mean, that's money we just have to set aside in case of an emergency, correct?
Right, we have, we have an investment policy by the district, and we're audited on how we do that. So we do invest it into various funds, both with Johnson Bank, our bank that we have, we have a special arrangement on a sweep account, and we also have, we invest money through something called WISC, and then sometimes we use the local government investment pool. But we've, we've been able to maximize more investment earnings, which actually helped us balance our budget. Our investment earnings went up about, to about half a million dollars, which helps our general fund.
So the cuts this year and the rate won't help us there. We're at 17.2, we have to be at 15. Do we ever, how liquid is that if we needed extra resources for something? By board policy, we have to be at 15%?
Well, the board policy is to maintain minimum of 15%. If we want to have a bond rating, go to, I think, we're AA3. If we want to go to AAA, you have to go above 20%.
I see.
So it's, we try to keep within that range.
Sure.
Now liquidity, the actual cash, it varies based on the year and time of the year, but we do have those funds available.
Thank you. Mr. Hanser.
So, Mark, I'm looking on page 10, and I know this is one of the challenges that we face, declining enrollment, fun math problem you take us through every year, increasing number of staff. And I don't know if this is a question for you or for Dr. Gallion. I think that one of the, one of the concerns that people raise is we have declining enrollment, why do we have increasing staff? And to be accurate to say that, a lot of that is because kids don't just all leave one school, and so you can't just cut staff at a certain place. But we're also adding additional staff to support the mental health needs of our students and some of the other programs that help our kids be successful. Is that a fair assessment?
So both statements are fair and accurate. They don't just all come out of one area. And we do have been, we have been making significant investment in making sure we provide more support to our staff and our students.
And I would like to say that the graph on page 10 is, was an indicator of the challenge we faced. We did reduce staff, so you would, if I had 19, 20 on here, you'd see that go down.
Okay.
So it did go down, so the 67 FTE would indicate, reflect a reduction. So that, that isn't reflected on that page 10 graph.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, Ms. Barbian.
Dr. Gallion, I know one of the significant additions to the budget was the teacher mentors at each of the schools. In your assessment, that was a strong investment.
Yes. That was an investment that we need to continue to support. And when Mark talked about the strategy to move some of those funds from Fund 10 to federal funds, that was one of the strategies we used to maintain those staffs, because we are seeing huge dividends on their work.
Thank you. Ms. Barbian.
I wanted to continue with Mr. Hanser's comment on declining enrollment and the not necessarily changing how many staff we have in place. Blue Ribbon Commission recommended additional funding for schools and districts with a large percentage of low-income students. They recognize that the cost of educating students in low-income areas have significant more issues and are a little more challenging for educating. Unfortunately, the state did not support that in their bill that they put forth. Hoping that might change next year as well, but I think the district and the population needs to understand that the challenges that we face with children who are of low income, trauma in their homes, increasing staff is one way we can address how to handle and support these kids and to give them the education they deserve that maybe other districts don't have to face.
I would add some numbers to that. Luther Olson, the chair of that committee, I believe, they studied international and outstanding educational systems around the world and recommended 0.2 increase for the, 20% increase for districts who are facing that challenge of teaching our, kids who are underserved. It's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of extra monies.
Mr. Duff, the, in past years, the expenditure restraint levy limit had been a factor. Did that play into the budgeting this year?
So the revenue limit, we, that was, that's always part of how we operate. We have a revenue limit, and we did have to reduce our expenditures because of the revenue limit by $2.4 million. So that's one of the things, is declining enrollment. Every year, then, at some point, we have to reduce our expenditures because our authorized revenue limit is based on how many students we have. So, so at some point, we, if we, it's about 10,000 a student, so if you have 400 student drop, at some point, you have to cut $4 million. So that's kind of the easy math of it, and that's what the revenue limit requires us to do, and they, they do have a system of a cushion. They give you a little bit of time to deal with it, but at some point, it has to be done.
Ms. Barbian.
Just want to support what you're saying, and to make sure that people understand this is not unique to Racine Unified. There is not only statewide, it's national. I think there's only two states that aren't dealing with declining enrollment. People just don't have as many children as they used to, and all of the districts in Wisconsin, with the exception of a couple in our area, are all facing declining enrollment and struggling with the revenue cap on how to overcome that. And I know there's some state legislators that are looking at changing how they can support that as well, so keep our fingers crossed.
Okay. Anyone else? Any further questions? If not, we do have to take an action on this matter. Is anyone willing to make a motion regarding the original budget for the 2019-2020 school year?
Move that we approve the original budget for the 2019-20 school year.
I'll second.
Mr. Hanser made a motion. Mr. Heckan-Lively seconded. Further discussion on the motion? All right. Ms. McKenna?
I just wanted to make a couple comments. I will be voting for it, but it was a struggle with, with the new financing of the pool. And, but I realized there's a lot of down, there's some downsides to it, but the upside outrate the downside. But the upside outrayed the downside, although I know it's very confusing when we talk about all the limitations and the restrictions that we have on the budget. And some of you mentioned that already. It's hard for people to understand why we're restricted over here, yet we can go over here and not be restricted. And then for some of the people that are involved, especially the people that are involved in the schools, they don't understand why they didn't have a chance to have a say or to look into it further. And there wasn't, I appreciate what was in the article today, and I appreciate that, but it would have been, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have the information needed for the budget hearing to go over that. And I know with the community fund, we only have one chance to make that decision. Otherwise, we'd have to wait another year to make that decision. And I know that Keys High School has been waiting two years. In a perfect world, or I would see in the future, it would have been nice if we, you know, down the future, if we were able to replace our high schools. They're getting old, 1928 for Horlick, that when somebody replaces a new high school, that might have been in their plan to put a pool in. So I don't know if that's coming down the road or not. It's also disheartening to see other school districts around us being able to replace their facilities and athletic facilities where we have not. And for 5,000, 100 years. So I know the pool's going to be needed. And I know with the closing of the other pools in the community, and the biggest challenge is a maintenance. So I will be voting for it, although I feel, I do understand the voice of the other people that may not be in agreement with it. It's very hard to say you're going to have the money for this, but you don't have the money for this over here. And how does that work? And I just wanted to say that I understand it, but I know it's, we have a few more things coming down the road and the finances will be coming to the board. But I do not want to delay it another year. We've already been waiting two years. And then I'm hoping down many years in the future, that somewhere in the community, when they get to the point of replacing the high schools, or if it doesn't work out, where the other high schools feel they have a need for their own pool, that they are able to find a way to do that if it serves us well. Yeah, I haven't heard anything from the high school students at all. The only thing I heard is that they're looking at, this is a much better pool than what they have, and so they're willing to share because it's better than what they have at their school. But I'm hoping down the, it'd be my wish in the future of this community that, down the road, that the individual high schools would have what they need, that they wouldn't have to share. Although I appreciate the pool is big enough, but the downside is other people have to travel, travel to get there. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Weiser?
I'm not going to say how long I've been with the school district, but when I started here, Jimmy Carter was a really young president. And when I first came here, the choice in setting a budget was, do you want to give a tax break to the taxpayers? Or do you want to improve programs and facilities in the district? It was one or the other. There's no way you could do both. I'm really, really pleased to see we've grown to the point where we can actually do both. We have expanded support programs for students. We have upgrades for athletic facilities. And at the same time, less than a third of the cost is on the local taxpayer, and the tax rate is continuing to drop for the school district. So I think we have ourselves in a very comfortable position. I am particularly excited about the partnerships on the athletic facilities at Pritchard Park and on the new approach to the pool facilities. We don't have a hot lunch program for each building. We don't have a bus company for each building. We may be at a point where we don't have a pool for every building, but we still need to supply the services. And I think our approach to these new facilities, especially with the partnership with the county, but also by spreading services of the pool over the entire community, I think it's a real healthy approach. We're going to realize some short-term savings on it through maintenance. We're going to realize some long-term savings on this because we won't need to upgrade every single building every time there's a problem. So I'm very comfortable with where we're going on these facilities. And I would just like to say, looking out at the audience tonight, we have a bunch of parents and students and coaches and stuff that look familiar from previous meetings here, and I'm real happy to see you here. Your involvement in developing some of these ideas was just a wonderful experience for the school board and the sincerity with which you brought things forward totally sold me on the value of moving forward on these items. So thank you for your involvement.
Further questions? Dr. Frontier?
Mark, in terms, maybe Superintendent Gallion, in terms of the structural deficit, where do you see us now that we're, have this year behind us in terms of a budget?
Well, this, I think at the public hearing, it showed that this does help us with our structural deficit. I'll be, once this is done, within a few weeks, we're starting on next year's budget. So we'll be working on projections for what we'll have to address for the next year's budget. Some of the, some of the things is, recognizing is those federal funds that we're using for this year's budget will be spent down, and now we'll have to cover it for next year. So we do, we'll do have some planning to do that. In addition, the decline in enrollment will also require us to make a reduction as well. So we do, we'll have a challenge again next year, but we've, this, these changes that we made this year are significant in helping us with sustaining our budget in the future.
So, and addressing this structural deficit is a process. So it requires some other things to happen. And we think that the facilities' long-range plan will help us if we are able to implement some of those strategies. Down the road, we'll start to see the structural deficit will, because with this plan, we'll be potentially right-sized in the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll call the roll or have a voice, roll call vote.
Ms. Barbian?
Yes.
Mrs. Simbalnick?
Yes.
Dr. Frontier?
Yes.
Mr. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. Heck and Lively?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser?
Yes.
It's nine yeses?
Okay. Next item is a follow-on item, to approve and certify the 2019-2020 fiscal year tax levy of $93,465,547. Mr. Duff, you have anything to say or add to that? Follows from the first item.
Yes, follows the first item and then, and in the item, it indicates the general fund levy, debt service fund levy, community service fund levy is included in that.
Do you need to adopt this? Is there a motion to approve and certify the fiscal year tax levy and the amount I stated?
Move to approve and certify the tax levy of $93,465,547 for the 2008, oh, wait, shouldn't it be 2018-2020?
1920, thank you.
Yeah, 2019-2020 school year.
Sometimes I recycle my documents. I have to make sure I check them to date.
I'll second.
Right, Mr. Heck and Lively made the motion. Ms. Barbian seconded. Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Barbian?
I wish we could increase that tax levy by 2 cents per 1,000, and what we could provide for our students with that 10 cent or 2 cents, but unfortunately, we can't. So we'll have to make do with what we can, what we can do.
Further comments? If none, please roll call vote.
Mrs. Simbalnick?
Yes.
Dr. Frontier?
Yes.
Mr. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. Heck and Lively?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Barbian?
Yes.
It's nine yeses?
Thank you. Motion carries. There's no other items to come before us. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
No moved.
Second.
Mr. Hanser and Ms. Barbian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Time for a roll call.